All right. All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order January 5th, 2020 at about 7:01 PM. And I'd like to turn it over to the mayor for the flag salute invocation.
Yeah, as we've been doing, take a moment to think of the people that are fighting this virus.
People are still coming in, so we're gonna wait till about 5:00 after. If you can turn your cameras off, please, and mute yourself, this will go much easier, okay? So no cameras necessary, and you can keep yourself muted. Certain times, yes, for questions.
Stevie, is this for our meeting, or is this for another meeting you're running? Hello?
I'm gonna continue, Joe. Pledge of the flag.
The United States of America. To the republic which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, thank you. So before I turn it over to the borough manager for roll call, I do want to just make you aware that Nick Waters has, he is absent from this today's meeting. He did phone me to let me know he wouldn't be here. So Andrew, if you're there, go ahead and take over for roll call.
Sounds good, Joe. Council President Papaleo.
Present.
Councilman Kyle Willis.
Present.
Councilwoman Lee Daley.
Present.
Councilwoman Nick Waters is absent. Councilwoman Melinda Isaac.
Present.
Councilman Jason McGuigan.
Here.
Councilman Robert Ruskowski.
Present.
Mayor Bob Frye.
Here.
Alex.
Present.
And I am present.
Okay, all right, so um, we'll start with Public Finance Administration. So we will discuss, let's discuss the purchase of the police vehicle. The chief did send over, I think, some documents for you to review, Andrew, and for you to look over. I think, you know, something that's budgeted every year. You know, we prepare for it. It's, I think it actually, we budget about $35,000. I think this one comes in a little bit under that. Am I right?
Yeah, well, I don't know, Brogo, if you want to speak on that, I'd rather you do it.
Yeah, it comes underneath. And the chief will probably have more information, but also leaves excess amount of money for equipment in as well. Good, Bill.
Okay.
Well, usually it's $35,000 is allotted. And then, on top of that, is a $20,000 that we used to have, was a $20,000. It was on the budget, but I forget the name of it, what it was called, but it was for $20,000. So it ended up being like for 50, what, 55,000? This year, it's 35, and no, for zero, for anything else. So we came in with the vehicle at 30,000. So that's where we're at right now.
Okay. All right, I mean, yeah, I mean, if there's any alterations or anything that needs to be done. I'm trying to think of what that line item was called that was $20,000, and I think we'd asked about it before we removed it.
There is an item for 20,000 as miscellaneous police expenditures or expenses. I do not know if that is the one we were speaking of, but that is budgeted for 20,000.
Is it in the current budget?
Yes.
Okay, so it's, I mean, it's there. All right.
It must be there, yes. I'm just saying that that's what it usually was. We looked along the lines of getting the Tahoe, but the Tahos right now, in trying to get one in, it's, we're looking maybe till October possibly. So there's no way for us to do that. So we had some really good in the past. Chief Ruskowski can actually talk about it more, but we've, we've done really well with the Dodge trucks. So that's, that's the route we are looking to do, because there's really less maintenance on them.
Okay, all right, very good. So I guess we'll, do we, do we need to put the expense on the agenda for the regular meeting? Or can we just go ahead and just go ahead and give him the permission to go ahead and do this now?
Hello?
No, I haven't. Alex, can you, you there?
Yeah, I mean, is this time sensitive, in the sense that you would need to get it in the next two weeks?
Well, no, I think that, I mean, I kind of want to be ready if we have to. Chief, where did you find out about the, do we have to put the order in, and then, and then when does the vehicle come?
No, from what I'm understanding, we placed the order, and we do not pay for anything until 30 days. We have 30 days after delivery. So I don't know how long it will take or whatever else, but we'll have 30 days after delivery to make payment.
And how long does it take from order to delivery?
That I don't know. I think they're all ready to go, the Dodge trucks. I don't think we'll have to wait at all.
Oh, all right, all right.
You should reserve one way, now, Joe.
What's that?
You should get it while you can. You don't want to wait too long, because if you wait, and other departments start picking them up, then you're in an ordering position, then you're gonna have to wait.
All right, Mike, are we good to go with that kind of expense now?
Yes, yeah, you have the cash available to pay for that.
Chief, I guess, can we take, I can take an order tonight under our new rules, right, Alex? I could take a vote, rather.
Yeah, you have a quorum, and this is a voting meeting now, so motion to authorize the expenditure, if you want.
All right, I'd like to motion to authorize the expenditure for up to $35,000 for a police vehicle. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Chief, go ahead and make that purchase.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
No problem, chief. So for anybody who wasn't paying attention, me, clearly, I skipped the audience participation, engineers reported the meeting, jumped right into the nuts and bolts of my portion. So let's roll it back a minute. Andrew, was there any audience participation this, for this meeting?
That's a negative, there was none.
And Lisa, are you available? You want to do the engineers report now? I'm sorry, I skipped you, I apologize.
We don't usually do the engineers report, the workshop, but a couple of things that are going on. Hopefully, I'll have all of the applications and all the information for this community development block grant. That's due tomorrow by 4 o'clock. We'll have to make copies of it. Once we have the copies, we'll send one over to HCD, and then one to the boroughs, so they have it for record. We did start, we should probably have it finished by the end of the week, the road program bid. So we'll be bidding that for the January meeting, not gonna do it for this, or excuse me, for the February meeting. Not gonna do it for this meeting, because we don't have enough time. So be the February meeting. That'll get us right where we need to be, get the contracts done, get the 329 in. And then we'll move forward with, with the project when the plan's open in April. I don't know, have we received the check from PICO at this point? For that work?
Mike?
I can check on that. I don't have the deposits journal in front of me, but I can make it as a note for it.
It should be like a 400,000, not like, it should be an over 400,000. So that would be, that would be something you would, yeah, it would.
I would, I would say no.
Yeah.
I will confirm that.
So.
I think it's like something to the tune of 403,000 or something.
Yeah, for, it's just a little bit over 400,000, but I, I figured if I asked that question, because it is such a large amount, it usually sticks in your brain that you've seen something, like what is this thing? Otherwise, we think we're pretty close with the Popeyes. There's a few minor things that need to be resolved, as far as some work that was done along the property line of Sabatino. And the developer doesn't want to put a retaining wall in, which I'm, I'm leaning towards not requiring it. But I want to make sure that Mr. Sabatino is aware that there is going to be grading on his property. So I'm still waiting for that. Once I have that, it's not a land development, this is purely a continuation of the initial Dollar General project. But I wanted to mention that, because hopefully, I know that they've already put their, their building permit applications in. So they can't do anything till all of this is resolved, and they'll issue the permits. I don't believe that I have anything else for the good of the order tonight. And just wish everybody a happy new year.
All right, thank you so much. I appreciate that, Lisa. So Mike, are you still with me?
Yes, I'm here.
So how are you feeling about, about, because I mean, we, I think we began our relationship with, with E collects for the collection of outstanding business taxes. And I just wanted to know, how do you feel about your, your current role with financial services with the borough? It was something that was supposed to be temporary. And it was under, it was, I think it was under both of our understandings, it would be a temporary fit. How do you feel about it? I mean, do you enjoy the work? Do you like, is this something that you would want to continue doing, or would you prefer that, that we continue with our original plan of keeping this as a, as a sort of a temporary relationship?
No, I discussed it with my other, with my other, with our controller, and I think now that all the accounts are reconciled, and we got all the heavy lifting done, I think we'd like to continue on. And we enjoy it, I mean, so.
All right.
It was a rough go in the beginning, but now that we're caught up in everything, and all the bills are paid, and no one's chasing anyone down, it's, it's something we like doing.
Yeah.
We prefer to stay on, if that's acceptable.
Okay, yeah, no, I, you know, I'm glad to hear that. So how does, I mean, you know, it's, that's something that I, you know, I want to talk over with my committee and see how they feel about it. And, you know, we won't have to make a decision in this meeting, but I didn't know that. I didn't know that it was something that you, you actually enjoyed. I didn't, I kind of thought you just stepped in, you know, for a, you know, to help us through a tough time. So I'm glad to have.
We did, and we see that, and we actually, there's, there's other communities, and we see that this can be a, an offshoot to another branch of our business, because there's, yeah, so I think that now that once we.
Yeah, it's a good thing to know now that you're, something that you can do, right? You might even have never known, so, yeah, no, I, I'm glad to know that. But, all right, so good, that's, that's good news. So I think we'll, just as long as I can get approval from, you know, I want to talk to the finance committee about it, and see how they feel about it, but I'm good with that.
Okay.
I'm good with keeping. So so I want to just let Andrew interject for a moment. It looks like he just missed a part of audience participation. So, Andrew?
Sorry about that. So I did, I apologize. This one came in during the holidays. So it's a message from Patty Williams. She's at 836 Delview Drive. She said, "Good morning, Merry Christmas, and thank you for all you do for the borough. Just a quick question, when they repave our roads, would we be able to get a speed bump or two on Delview? People fly down our road, our street, especially a little black car who doesn't even live on the street. Once they come off Grant and around the curve, they floor it, because that's all, because they see it's a straight run. No regard for kids, pets, or people in general. I know we'd have to go to a meeting or join Zoom to suggest this, I'm just wondering how, if it's a possibility, and have them on Providence or going up to Coles." There's another part of it. And thank you so much. And I reached out to Patty and did let her know that this would be put onto the, this could be read into the record.
So this is something that's been brought up before, and I'm not opposed to the concept, but there are reasonable objections to it. And some of the reasonable objections to it are that it makes for, in terms of weather mitigation, like snow plowing. Speed bumps present serious setbacks to that, to, you know, to the, to the plowing operations. You know, also to police and EMS vehicles. So nobody likes a vehicle to speed until they need an ambulance to speed to their house, right? So there's that, too. So I mean, I just want to be considerate of those two factors. I mean, other than that, I'm not entirely opposed to the concept. But chief, what's your feedback on that?
Well, obviously, we can't catch everybody doing everything all the time, but in the same token, if you wanted me to do a study on Delview Drive, I could do a study, and you can see exactly where it's at, and what, if there is a speeding problem. We've done this in the past where people have complained, and it was a low enforceable rate of, of speeding. So we've never even, the only place that we had it was on Delmar Drive, and we now have lines up there to, to do the speeders.
Yes. So, yeah, I mean, listen, with the, with the amount of illegal parking that goes on on Delview Drive, I find it hard that anybody's able to move at a certain rate of speed down that street, because everybody's parked along the wrong side. But do we do a speed, a speed, a speed study on that street already?
No, we did not. We did not do Delview Drive. We did Primus Avenue, the 100 block. We did Delmar Drive. We did Bennetton Road.
Okay, all right.
And school lane, I'm sorry, and school lane as well.
Would you mind doing one on that? Yes.
I was gonna say, yeah, that's, I was, I was gonna say something about, if you're gonna talk about doing the study, that's fine.
Well, no, what were, were you gonna say?
I was just gonna, yeah, I was gonna say that we had spoke before about possibly doing removable speed bumps, and it might be something that we look into pricing, ones that we could move around the area, because like the chief is saying, this is something we've had to do a couple of times. If we slow people down by speed bumps, we don't have to worry about policing them so much as slowing them down. So if we had movable ones that we could maybe rotate through the borough, we could go and slow people down in certain areas when we find that we're having these issues, and they wouldn't be there when snow removal was the issue.
Um, actually, I don't think that's a bad idea. I don't think the removables are a bad idea. Does anybody object to us looking into removable speed bumps?
I don't think so, no. I actually think right around where Coles is, if you notice on that road, I think it's, I'm not sure if it's still Providence, or, they have.
Yeah, I know where that is. They're very effective. They're, they're more like, they're not like the, the short, regular speed bumps you're used to. I think they're more like of a speed hump. I don't know if that makes it easier for the purposes of plowing, but.
The reason, the reason the movable ones are good is because we're constantly hearing this issue all over the borough. So rather than us actually putting in concrete or blacktop or whatever, ones like what we, right, it would be the whole neighborhood, it would be Pico all over again. So having movable ones would slow people down randomly, like we could do a month of them on, you know, Grant Road, or we could do a month of them on Kent, or whatever the issue is, that just randomly slowing people down, and making people more aware. I mean, my husband constantly is complaining about people on Heather Road. But if we had the chief come out here, I guarantee you, it might be two cars. And it's not enforceable, like he's saying, but if we slow those people down randomly, then we just, people are more aware of slowing down.
Right. I mean, here's the thing. Maybe it's two or three cars, but, you know, it's, it's only two and three cars until one of those two or three cars kills someone. So, you know, I mean, that's a fair point, too. So here's the other factor. The removal speed bumps are a great idea. Whose jobs are going to be to put them up and pick them back up, to put, to lay them down and pick them up? Is that going to be highway? Is that going to be police? Is it going to be, is Andrew gonna throw them in the?
I would say it's highway.
Toyota and haul them down.
I would say either Kyle's job or highway.
So let me ask you this. Is it legal? Are there, are there legal parameters? Do we have to put signage up? Portable sign, like, there's, there's all this other stuff that goes into it. So do we, are we required to put a sign up, speed bump ahead, or no? I actually would rather enjoy the, the sound of their car getting all banged up on the bottom, because they're driving too fast. But I don't know if we're required to put a sign up. Anybody know that? Anybody? Going once.
I don't think so. I don't remember there being any signs, speed bump ahead on the road going to Coles.
That's true.
Leave me, and if you think about, if you think about it, am I right on that?
Now, if you go up to Coles, it's gonna, it's gonna say, speed hump ahead. And, and basically what they did with that, I talked to their chief about that. They did stuff with their liquid fuels tax or whatever else, and paid for it that way, but they're very expensive, the permanent ones. I do not know anybody around here that has the portable ones, but we would have to do some kind of research to find out if people do, or boroughs or townships have them, and find out through their borough manager or something, whether, if they're successful or they're not.
If I may, since I'm the one that would design the speed hump, and it's actually a speed table, we're the ones that did the ones that are by Coles, that's Morton Borough there. Number one, each speed hump or speed tables, about $7,500.
Wow.
We have them in quite a few of my municipalities. The one that, that strikes me the most is, is in Upper Rochester, right by the high school. Mill Road has several of them. You are required to put signs up noting that there are speed humps, there are markings that need to be done. Billy, call over to Parkside Borough and speak to Tom, because I don't know if Tom would know, he's the new chief. We call over there, and maybe he or Rob Powers from Parkside, they use the temporary, but I do not believe they put them in the past two years because of issues. So Parkside's probably the only one that I know of that uses those temporaries or use those temporaries. One of the problems with, with speed, those small speed humps, is you hear ba-boom, ba-boom, because they're rubber. And then the residents whose houses next to them are complaining that they're hearing these noises. Really. Boy, frankly, if you're going to start any kind of a traffic calming program, you need to start the program off correctly. And that would be that the residents would be required to file a petition. There is a procedure that PennDOT has, and that's the best way, because you do one street, you're going to have everyone looking at them. And, and beyond that, when you look at where you're going to place them, there's requirements by PennDOT where you place them. Remember, you're, you have liquid fuels money, so if you're not using it per the PennDOT standards, you can lose that liquid fuels money. We don't want to do that. So there's requirements for PennDOT. There's, typically, the resident will, will put in an application, there's a form that they have. And, and after that, the first thing that happens is the, the chief, the police, would actually do a speed study to determine if it's really happening, or is it something that's perception? I might suggest that you do not do that speed study until after PICO finishes. Because right now, you have people that are trying to get away from Taylor Drive, so they may be taking alternate routes. They might be better off waiting until they finish their, their trench restoration before you do anything. My, my three cents, but I can tell you that there are certain requirements that are necessary. A speed table is much different than a speed hump. You have less time. The problem with emergency services is that with a speed hump, it takes longer to get over than a speed table. So what you see it on Providence is actually a speed table. That's why it looks different than a, just a hump. That's it.
I will, I will contact Parkside tomorrow and find out a little bit about it.
All right. Okay, so where were we? Oh, that was, that was, that was audience participation.
Audience participation, yep.
Yep, okay, I'm thrown for a loop there. All right. So I think that's actually, that's good. Let's do some fact finding. We'll, we'll get back to the, I want to thank the resident for bringing that up. It was, it was definitely productive. We'll get back to the table with whatever new facts we can bring, and once we know more, we can move forward. So I think we were also going to discuss the possibility of creating an in-house position for some permits and inspections for like UNOs. And like, building permits, of course, would still be with Catania, but I think like the rental UNOs, we were going to discuss the, the concept of maybe bringing that in-house. Of course, it, it's not something that you could just hire anybody for. It requires serious talent. I shouldn't say talent, but that, there's, there's some certifications and training and a skill set that are required. But it's something that Lisa, I think, did Andrew speak with you about it? He did, okay, all right, so I don't know if anybody else wants to, you know, add to that at all? Anyone? No? All right, so we'll go to public works. Councilman Willis, I'm sorry, it's weird, it's weird doing this on my cellphone. It's a little still different from having my computer. So forgive me if I seem a little choppy, it's because I am. So it's, it's a, it's a little bit different to operate, but go ahead, Kyle.
Uh, no new business at this time.
Public Safety Committee?
No, nothing else, you had a truck with it.
Okay, all right. Public Health Literacy, Councilwoman Isaac.
Yes, I spoke to Jen today. She is in the process of getting quotes for the flooring, and also looking into matching grants to try to help as well. As far as the pricing.
All right.
That's, so that's what she said. They're still doing curbside. The porch lights still need to be fixed. The back of the porch, as we, as we know from the Christmas tree lighting, they're not working at all. She also said something, the clock tower is not working?
No, it's not. It's not telling time correctly. So Andrew, first things first, can you get a work order over to Highway Department to have them check the back lighting on at the, at the library? Also, I mean, for the new flooring, is that something the council has to bid out? Yes, yeah, at least I see it.
Again, we put together a, a cost estimate for Jen. She has a copy of that. I have samples for her. I haven't gotten over to the library to drop them off, because I want to make sure she's there when I do drop them off for various different samples for flooring. We also did painting the walls, doing base cove, because if you do the flooring without the carpet, that there, there would need to be a base cove. They came to something like $60,000. We are eligible for Keystone Grant. The last one you had, we did the lighting in the library. So that's, that's definitely a potential for matching.
She did, she did mention that as well. She's just looking into other things as well to try to help.
Yep.
All right.
So if, if, depending on how she, if she's going to do more than just the flooring, then it is going to be more than, than the $25,000, and you would have to bid it. So you may have to get the prices anyway.
I can't imagine flooring being, well, I guess, yeah, I mean, if we're not gonna do carpet, if we're gonna do like a nice hardwood, it's not a cheap job.
And I'd rather. She was looking at tile, so that it was easier to clean than, than a wood floor or carpet.
Like ceramic?
Like a, well, yeah.
Okay.
So similar tile that we used in, in the library at Ridley.
Okay, all right.
And that's all I have.
Okay, all right, very good. Do they do terrazzo anymore, Lisa, or no, it's not a thing? I can't.
I don't know that.
Like, I'm I'm thinking of like what a hallway looks like in a school that I'm used to going to.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that anybody uses terrazzo anymore.
Okay. All right, just, I know.
Like wearing bell bottoms, you know?
Right. I mean, I know you never, once you put it down, you never have to replace it. So it's true. It lasts forever. So, um, all right, so no new business from you, Councilwoman Isaac? Correct?
I just finished what I said, so there's nothing more. No.
Okay, yeah, just just double checking with you. So municipal planning and zoning costs council, Councilman Waters is not. Uh, he's not present tonight, and there is no new business to discuss there. So moving on to Public Parks and Recreation Councilwoman Daly.
No new business.
Um. Municipal Legislation Councilman Waters, no new business. Excuse me. The new construction committee, can I get an update on that, Kyle?
Um, I, Alex can possibly give us the most up-to-date information about the loan closing, but that is our current stage is closing the loan. Um, I know there's been a bunch of stuff going back and forth about the schedule of payments. Um. Information with Mike. Um, so Alex, where are we at with the um actual loan?
Man, that's pretty much it. Um, we were going back and forth with the bank over the last couple of weeks about getting revisions to some of the documents. Um, they're a little bit slow moving on it, but it was understandable. There's the holidays. Mike did prepare uh the revised debt schedule that we needed, so um in discussions today, we're working out a closing time for next week. Uh, between us and the bank. But it's just minor details that we're finishing up now. We should be ready to have everything signed and executed next week.
And then, and then once that's done, we're ready to schedule a ground to break, we can break ground, right?
Right. I mean, yeah, I mean, the money is just instantly deposited into that drawdown escrow account the day that we finish everything up, so that'll be next week, and then you guys can proceed from there.
Here's the other thing. It's also real cold outside, so. Um, Lisa, it's it's, we're probably not going to be able to do that till early spring, am I right?
Well, once, once, I don't, I don't know where we are with all of the documentation that we need to send to RCAP either. So I believe the loan is one of the documents that has to be submitted. We haven't, we haven't gone through that, the checklist um that we put together a couple months ago, I guess it is now. Um, I highly doubt that contractor will start in February. With with a winter season, they probably would wait till the spring.
How far, how far down on that checklist are we?
So there's a number of items, Andrew. I don't know where we are on some of them. Um, but I know the loan was one. The RCAP grant for the checklist is for them to do their final disbursement for that, so.
Yeah, the the base, it's basically all related to the loan. Everything else is in and and has been in since for some time.
So it's just the last few items with that.
Right, please check, please check with RCAP and be sure.
Yeah, I have.
Okay, I want to be, because I don't, I don't want any more surprises. I don't want any more surprise delays. I'm going to be really pissed off if there's any more surprise. I'm going to, I'm going to like, my head's going to pop off.
What if it's a surprise birthday for you, Joe?
Uh, well, I'm not, I'm not that excited about being forty. But uh, thank you. Maybe we'll, maybe that that might butter me up. We'll see.
Okay.
Um, so that, so everything's related to the loan. Just, I would just please double check with RCAP. I just, I really want to be done with this, and I want this building up. Um, I think we all feel that. I think we all feel that way. Um, so is there anything else, Kyle, for for new construction?
No, I mean, the lot, once the loan is closed, then we can start to reevaluate what's the next step, but.
Okay, all right. Uh, Parking Permits Committee, anything, anything new from that?
Um, no, we're going to schedule the next meeting for that to start to go over some more details. Um, and. Hopefully have some more information for us for the next meeting.
Okay, I certainly would uh. Would like to be part of um. Would like to be part of the next meeting. Um, so yeah, just please let me know. Um, Mike Hill, can you stay on this call with with me and Lisa after we adjourn?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes.
Did Joe drop off? I think he may have.
Yeah, I think we lost Joe. He got him.
Give him a second to jump back in.
Got him excited about his birthday.
All right, Kyle, you're effectively it. Let's go.
I I don't think that he meant to leave. I will take over if he can't get back in. I know you want to go.
I want to go. I have stuff to do.
I I understand that. Give him a chance. He may be sitting in the waiting room. I don't know if Stevie can hear us. All right, well, we will continue to move on. I'm sure he won't feel too bad about that. I assume I'm allowed to do that, Alex.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, all right, so I believe we just finished mine, the Parking Permit Committee, so on the agenda, we have Police Chief's report. Chief, do you have anything for us?
There's really no new business or getting back to work or whatever. Um, I guess we did want to go over with council and um. Chief Ruskowski, you may be able to help with this. Uh, about the crossing guards as far as pay and um. Their raise, what what was their normal raise? Because I don't really have that. I just know our part timers go up by twenty five cents. But I don't know what the um, the uh crossing guards, what their raise would be.
I think that had to do with uh the school district and the borough had to agree upon them, I believe, well.
Okay, um, I assume there must be an agreement somewhere with those numbers in it. Um, Andrew, I don't know if you can figure out. What that might look like?
Hey, sorry, I was trying to contact Steve. Um, offhand, I'm not aware of your referring to a uh. The crossing guards, I'm not aware of a of a contract offhand, but there may be one I can check when I get in tomorrow.
Okay, here, here comes Joe.
Hold on, I'm getting in. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right, sorry about that.
It's okay. We started the Police Chief's report while you were away.
Chief, I'm sorry to interrupt your report. Peek-a-boo, everybody, I'm back. I had a bit of a technical problem. Sorry about that.
Not a problem. What is going on about the um, the crossing guard stuff, and we want to thank you again for the vehicle. Um, and uh, have a happy new year, I guess.
All right, thank you, Chief. Sorry about that, everyone. I do apologize. My phone died. So that'll be the last time I do this with my phone. Um, so we're going to the Solicitors' Report.
I have nothing.
Nothing. Finance Director's Report?
Um, just, just a couple items. Uh, we submitted checks for an amount of five hundred twenty three thousand nine ninety six seventy two for December. And then we finalized the amortization schedule for for the loan that that. That everyone's going to take a hard look at before we submit it to Republic. That's it for me.
All right, uh Borough Managers' Report? Andrew, you're the Borough Manager.
I I think I am, just double checking, making sure. Um, the uh, so you had a a Borough Manager's Report with uh on Sunday. Um, one thing I wanted to talk about that was not on that report in particular, uh was that um, we are now, we had some slight delays with the backhoe. They went into too much detail, but there's been some progress since they sent that out. Uh, today, Sean Payne and I went and actually looked at the vehicle that we had agreed uh to accept the bid for. Um, Sean noted fifteen different items that needed to be fixed on the vehicle. Uh, everything from, you know, wear and tear, usual wear and tear from rust. Uh, to the uh, the hood of the vehicle is dented, some lights are out, and a few other minor issues. Other than that. Um, the vehicle actually has less uh hour use usage than was reported in the bid. It's uh seven one thousand seven hundred sixty six point five hours instead of the eighteen hundred hours they told us. Obviously, that's, you know, difference isn't huge, but it's nice. Um, the uh Company United Rentals agreed to repair all fifteen items that Sean reported prior to delivering the vehicle, which they would do, uh bring it to Borough Hall. Uh, Sean is comfortable with that situation. I'm comfortable advocating advocating for him on his behalf. Uh, and I'd also like to let council and our residents know that he did a fantastic job reviewing this vehicle. Um, and 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 uh, as I have no knowledge of backhoes. Um, so I just wanted to thank him. Um. Just wanted to go over with you the the snowstorm that we had a few weeks ago. We had about forty to fifty, I know there were some resident complaints, about forty to fifty code enforcement violations, and I'm wrapping this in with code enforcement. Uh, that were written uh after the twenty-four hour deadline for residents to remove snow uh passed. Um, most of those houses were shoveled probably within hours of the fine being issued. A few of them probably never shoveled it. I think, uh, again, and it's in our report, that the Highway Department did a fantastic job. Um, we had staff on for thirty-two hours straight in intervals. And kept our streets open. I checked our streets and I compared them to neighboring streets during and after the storm, and I really think they did a wonderful job.
I know, yeah, they they definitely did. I, there was a couple knuckleheads who didn't know what they were talking about, running their mouth on Facebook. And I and I call them knuckleheads. I hope they see this meeting and I hope they they hear me say it, because it's true, you're a knucklehead. But comparative to other towns, we we. Way ahead of the curve. So if that offends you, good. Go ahead, Andrew. I'm sorry.
And, you know, but that 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 really uh summarizes it. I mean, that's just what I wanted to. I wanted to reiterate that they did a really great job, and 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 I am proud of them. So. Um. Use and occupancy inspection letters are going out this week. The first batch, about a third of them have gone out already. Uh, remainder will be out uh probably tomorrow. And um. Joe Donnelly is out for a period of time. He will be back Monday. Other than that, events are pretty slow. I I want to thank, again, this is in the report, but I want to thank Senator Anthony Williams. Uh, Senator Williams picked uh Fallcroft and gave out five gift cards to residents in Fallcroft at his office. Um, so I I got him in touch with 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 five households for residents in need. Um, I think that was very generous of him.
Yes, thank you, Senator Williams. We should probably maybe draft a thank you card or something. Um, send them along. I'll be happy to sign it and and if I have to write it, I'd be happy to write it, but uh. And we definitely want to make sure we give a thanks for thanks is due. How did the Deloso event go with uh property rent, the property tax and rent rebate?
It it was great, and without giving out resident details, resident information. Um, we had at least four residents that I believe did not even, were not even aware of the program previously, who are able to utilize it and qualified and submitted. Uh, applications through Rep Deloso's office. Um, and at least one resident received nine hundred seventy-five dollars. So if you're listening and you think you might qualify for a property tax rebate. Uh, I, you can call us, but I definitely have been calling Rep Deloso's office and finding out. It, I put this on social media recently, but it's for uh people who live on social security disability between ages eighteen and sixty-four. People who are ages sixty-five plus, widows and widowers between the ages of fifty and sixty-four, and anybody who lives in a household with somebody that qualifies in one of those categories. For owners, you can uh make up to thirty-five thousand dollars per year, and it's an increment, so the amount you get back is based on how much you make, and there's different categories. Without going into all of them, uh you can also get an extra fifty percent back on the category if you make more than, or you pay more than fifteen percent of your annual income in property taxes. Uh, which, if you live in Delaware County, you do, um, most likely. So uh, renters can also apply, although it's a lower income level. But if you think you might, you might qualify, it can't hurt to look into it. You're not wasting anybody's time.
Okay, very good. And I do see here that it looks like the 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 main, the bulk of the Pico work done by utility line services is done. Um, we're just waiting on the completion of, I think, trench restoration, which seems to have stalled. So if you could find out what's going on about that. I would, that would be really helpful. I'd like to know why that. I haven't seen the trench restoration work ongoing in the borough in a little bit, so I don't know what.
Also, Andrew, I've talked to you before about this. Um, I think Pico probably needs to come back and do a sweeping of the streets before they're officially allowed to. Out of here. There is debris and rock everywhere on the wrong side of the street. It's. Like a nice pile. I've actually sent Andrew some pictures of like Heather Road, but it's on all the streets. So they probably need to come back and do, I don't know. What they can do if they pay us to do sweeper or what, but there is a lot of debris out there, a lot.
I think the simplest solution is to ask ULS to come in and 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 uh and sweep it again. I actually had them sweep it already, but I, obviously, there's just so much material on the street that. It's still coming up and and they're going to have to hit it again. I I don't disagree with you. I checked it today. Um, actually, to add to that, ULS, we had an incident where our plow was slightly damaged during the snowstorm. And we had about six hundred dollars in damage to the plow. The lighting was broken because of the choppiness of the trenches in the street, and ULS has agreed to pay to repair that damage, so. So I just want to let you know that.
All right, very good. Uh, and we're going to have to talk about our options for um. To, after the roads are repaved, I either want to put some kind of moratorium on that, where they're they're not to be torn up again for a period of time. I also would like to maybe explore ordinances that say that any utility that tears up a street like that has to pay, repave the whole street from curb to curb out of their pocket. So um, I want to, we don't have to deal with that now, but it's something I want to put in everybody's head and start looking into, because. You know, I just, I want to, if we ever have to go down this road again with another utility, say water lines. I want, by the time that happens, I want the next council to have some tools in front of them that that can prepare them for this. So. Um, that said, looks like we have the Borough Manager's Report. Is there anything under old business? So under, actually, there is something under old business. Lisa Catania, Andrew Hayman, Kyle Willis, and Mike Hill. Yes, I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna need you for to stay on after this so we could, because we have to get a couple bills paid. So, all right, we got to talk about that. So um. Nothing under old business, uh, nothing else under old business, nothing under new business? Anyone? Can I entertain a motion to, can I have somebody, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, all right. Uh, meeting's adjourned.
All right, have a good night, everybody.
Have a good night.
See you. Bye-bye.
See ya.